It's ten thirty AM, we are going to begin this special meeting of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners. Please work session? We're going to begin this work session of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners. What's his agenda?
It's authority.
Sorry. It's on here?
It should be authority, maybe it's not, okay. One more, ten thirty. Well, ten thirty.
Where is it?
Go back. Ten thirty AM.
So it's good?
Special, we had the article.
Oh, exactly, oh, sorry. Agenda.
Wonderful, ten thirty, eleven AM. Agenda item number one. The presentation and overview from the Intermountain Transportation Planning Region, IMTPR. This will be led by Northwest Colorado Council of Governments Representative Dana Wood. Who I believe is with us online today, right? Yes.
Buddy, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, um, thanks for having us today, um, I'm Dana Wood, I'm the Mobility Director for the Northwest Colorado Council of Governments. And I manage and I'm admin for the Intermountain Transportation Planning Region as well as our Regional Transit Coordinating Council. So I have two folks with me today, Mark Rogers from CDOT and then Brian Pettit, our Chair of the IMTPR. That will share kind of a very big overview of the IMTPR. Um, and then I can kind of fill in some gaps as far as um, how I can help you all in my role. And yeah, just get comfortable with the group and come into our meetings, so I will turn it over to Mark and Brian.
Well, thank you, um, I would like, I'd like to let Brian Pettit introduce himself, he's the Chair of the Intermountain TPR. Um, I have a presentation, but I'd kind of like to let him go ahead and introduce himself if he'd like, and then I'll go ahead with the presentation.
Thanks, Mark, I appreciate that, uh, can everybody hear me okay?
Sure can, thanks, Brian.
You bet, I'm Brian Pettit, um, the Chair of the Intermountain Transportation Planning Region or Regional Planning Commission for CDOT. And um, we are elected to two-year terms based on our current bylaws and so I'm uh, serving the first year of a two-year term right now. I also am the Public Works Director for Pittkin County. Been involved in the Intermountain region for about thirty years. So um, I've seen it uh, ebb and flow as uh, as money ebbs and flows from the region. Uh, we represent a five-county area Summit, Lake, Pittkin, uh, Garfield and Eagle Counties. Uh, we uh, consult with CDOT on uh, regional priorities, we just are finishing up. A twenty fifty planning process where we uh, prioritize projects against each other throughout that five-county region. And submit those priorities to CDOT for inclusion in a statewide plan. So we're just finishing that up, um, we also distribute uh, grant funds. And regional priority uh, monies uh, through the uh, through the uh, through the region as well. And through the Transportation Commission. We meet quarterly and uh, those meetings are, we form that agenda, uh, Dana, me and Bentley Henderson. From Garfield County who is the Vice Chair, put together those agendas with CDOT to make sure that uh, we're using our time effectively. And it's also a time where people with like minds to serve transit needs and transportation needs. Get together and collaborate, so it's not only just an agenda-driven uh, process, it's also a time where relationships are developed and fostered. So that's kind of the role of the Intermountain TPR is really just uh, planning and funding distribution. We are part of Region Three. And uh, that's where the money is funneled through to our Region Three, CDOT uh, region. With that, I'll kick it to Mark and he can do his overview and we can answer any questions you may have.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks so much, Brian, um, so I guess I'll let, I, I'm not sure, I think uh, Lake County is running the slideshow, so I'll just have to kind of go next slide. I sent this PDF out to everybody, it's just a few slides to just kind of go over um. The funding sources and transportation planning process. The Intermountain TPR or TPRs within this whole state are very valued members of their traffic, uh, very valued members of the planning process. So if you go to the next slide, we'll talk, we are right in the middle of the plan development right now. Um, we kind of generically call it a long-range plan development, we look out twenty years. Um, into the future, the one we're just finishing will be the twenty fifty plan. And we're just wrapping that up, you should see a draft plan within the next two to four weeks. Um, to, for, go over and look at. One of the main ingredients on these plans are projects that the counties and the cities come to us with and, and we worked with them to prioritize. Um, so we're gonna kind of talk about how those projects kind of come in. But more importantly, how the funding comes back out to, to work and develop those, those priorities. So after the planning is done, we then get to what's called a ten-year plan. And this ten-year plan um, is fairly new addition to CDOT, it started in twenty nineteen. Um, we're almost done with the first ten-year plan, we're going into the second new ten-year plan. Um, the long-range plan does not have fiscal dollars tied to it, we kind of look at estimates. The ten-year plan starts to have dollars actually tied to it and we project. Um, it's not fiscally constrained, meaning we don't really, or the first one wasn't, this one will probably be more likely fiscally constrained. But again, these are just estimates of dollars coming in. Then after we do the ten-year plan, we do a four-year annual STIP. The STIP stands for Statewide Transportation Improvement Program. These are where actual dollars are programmed into um, the construction and, and development stages of the state highway system. And these are constrained, meaning these have to be at least real dollars and we can't plan beyond those real dollars or as real projected dollars. Um, so through this whole process, we use data integration um, on some things and I'll go over that. And then stakeholder and community input, so next slide. So then the Finance and the Governing Board of the Tr- is, of the Transportation Commission. All funding is the budget, the right-of-way takes, formulating policy, this is all done by the Transportation Commission. There's eleven districts, they are appointed by the Governor. The district represents Lake County is District Seven. And Commissioner Bowman, Barbara Bowman is your representative on that commission. And that's what makes a lot of final decisions specifically on projects on the ten-year plan and other such. Um, we go to them with the proposals and that they make the final decisions. For the next slide. So to advise the statewide Transportation Commission, we have what's called the STACK, the Statewide Transportation Advisory Committee. This committee is made up of all the TPRs and the MPO, and MPO is just stands for Metropolitan Planning Organization. Um, these are the five most populous areas of the state, um, the rest are, but they all represent equally. Um, on this statewide transportation advisory committee, they meet once a month before commission to kind of go over different things and advise the commission on how they would like to, to, and how they would like to vote or um, different opinions. And the commission can take it or leave it as with any advisory board. Um, but that's, that's kind of the whole part of that. Brian Pettit is the Chair of the, of the Intermountain TPR which represents Lake County. And so if you wanted anything really brought up at STACK or brought before commission, um, he would be the contact person to really go over um, what's going on. And again, those are more high-level state decisions. Um, but again, a lot of issues that you feel need to go to Transportation Commission, we'd love to visit with you about um, as well. But we can kind of visit with you about these, all the Transportation Commission and statewide Transportation Advisory Committee meetings are shown on YouTube. Um, you can go to YouTube and look at any of these and kind of look at the whole, uh, look at the process that's done on this. So next slide. So those are the pre, those are the big overarching governing bodies that, that determine what CDOT does and how CDOT works. Um, the Intermountain TPR is one of four planning areas within Region Three. Region Three covers fifteen counties in Northwest Colorado from the Wyoming border and the Utah border. All the way over to Eisenhower Tunnel and almost to the New Mexico border down there by Hinsdale. Um, it's a big region, we actually have the largest region in the state. And uh, a lot of, lot of work to do, um, but we try to meet with each, each county at least every other year, we're going to try to go out this fall, I believe, to do county meetings again. And the county commissioners. If I may take a pause here real quick, eh, the, the Lake County Commissioners, are all of you new to the commission? Or, or some of you, have, have you met with any of us before?
We are all new.
Okay, so and that's, that's great, I will, I kind of felt that way because I didn't recognize any faces there, I've been with CDOT now twenty years. Um, so I just kind of wanted to, in this, in this position, enjoy the, the planning position. But I just uh, want to give you and, and hope you get my email address through this and if you have any questions afterward. The, my phone number is at the bottom of my email signature, you're free to call me anytime. Um, so within Region Three, these are the areas that we cover, if you'll go to the next slide. Our organization is run by the Regional Transportation Director, that is Jason Smith. And then your program engineer that covers Lake County is Karen Bertle. She is over a lot of the construction, a lot of the project planning, project uh, stuff that's going through. And then the resident engineer would be John Cronholm. And their email addresses are below, again, if you had project-specific questions. You would, you can email them or you could call me, I can, I can help you out on that. The other thing that we, that comes up quite often in the Intermountain TPR meetings, especially the one, I don't know if Brian mentioned, we do have one on the eighteenth. Agenda, um, it's in Glenwood Springs, but I know that there's a virtual option. One of the things that we will have there is an update for the construction season, every spring we try to do some sort of update. That really goes into the construction season, so everybody's aware of kind of some of the traffic issues and where we'll be working. So that will be discussed at the Friday meeting, so.
And Mark, if, if I could interrupt you just a second, I, it's a time when we can uh, let Lake County know, we we typically have our meetings in Eagle, but I think this year we're trying to move them around and actually uh, hopefully get closer to you. So you don't have to travel as far, so the next meeting happens to be in Glenwood Springs, but the following meetings will be uh, closer to Lake County and maybe we can even get, get to Lake County and have a meeting soon, so I want to thank Dana for arranging those different meeting areas. Because we, we, we understand that getting to the meeting physically is, is a challenge sometimes, so I just want to point that out.
So, and this is actually a good little pause in the presentation because what I've really gone over is the governing bodies. Kind of the, the management, who to contact, if there's, one of the other ones on here that I didn't put down. Is our traffic engineer covers the whole region, all fifteen counties. And that is Dane Zanomicek and I can, I'm happy to send that to, in an email, the same place that I sent this presentation. Um, his traffic seems to be a big part of the initial questions that come up. Um, and so those are real big issues that, that typically drive, um, that I don't handle, but is there any other questions as far as organization or as far as who to contact that you're kind of curious about, this before I go on to the financial side?
No questions.
I keep hearing about the um, roundabout projects on twenty-four ninety-one, ninety-one and eighty-two. Um, and just to stay informed on those, who would I be reaching out to to make sure we're staying up to date as a county about what's going on with that?
Okay, so that would be traffic and that would be to, so twenty-four ninety-one and then twenty-four and eighty-two, is that what you said?
That's what I've heard.
Yes, okay, so they have discussed those, exactly, I don't know exactly where they are in their planning process and, and moving forward. A lot of those, so when I say planning, most of the time I just deal with a lot of the funding, right now there's no real construction funding going to that. Um, so I know they're in the design and the planning stage and those would fall under traffic right now. Um, they may fall under also Karen Bertle is a great resource, she would know all of the projects even, even if they're traffic. Um, she would at least kind of have an idea, so John Cronholm also as the resident engineer, he covers Lake and Eagle County, he is a great resource on that as well, and so you could kind of send emails to those. Um, and before I'm done, I will put my number in the, at least the chat, so you guys can copy that down if you have other questions. So those are more, if you have questions on what's going on, the organizational structure of CDOT. And the governing board that, that manages it and, and how you are connected to get any questions or um, I guess appeals or other uh, comments to your elected governing bodies within CDOT.
Great, thank you.
Alright, so then we get into funding, which if you'll go to the next slide. Um, this is kind of what I do more than anything, I kind of make sure we have funding, I, my job is to plan out funding and project funding for twenty years. And look at it also on a year-to-year basis, so right now, CDOT has about a two-billion-dollar budget, if I do all the math and stuff real quick. Um, this is increased over time, we used to have about billion two in the early two thousand. But it's, it's increased little by little, um, through various programs, a big majority of this is um, probably sixty percent federal, forty percent state. A majority of this funding, same with the county, comes through HUTF, which is the Highway Users Tax Fund. And that's done by gas tax at uh, eighteen percent for the feds, twenty-two percent, or not percent, whoa, eighteen cents. Over federal, twenty-two cents at the state. And those have not changed since the nineties. Um, so right now eighty-two, roughly eighty-two percent are covered by the purple, the yellow and the green here. So our highest amount that, that goes to the budget is the capital construction. This is asset management, which I'll talk a low, about a little bit more. Our safety programs, our ten-year projects and our regional priority program, I'll be going all over, over all these a little bit for the end. The next outlay is maintenance and operations, that is twenty-seven percent of our budget. And then sub-allocated programs, these are programs that are just passed through. So for example, Lake County ha, received an MMOF grant a couple of years ago, we're still working on that, it's a planning grant. Um, that was a sub-allocated program, the money came into CDOT, we pushed it right on out to Lake County. And so that's, that's kind of an uh, uh, kind of example on that, it's also aeronautics. Um, and other, other things and that's about eighteen percent, so of those three categories, that's eighty-two percent of our budget, the rest would be administration, um, other programs. Are, one of the things on here I want to talk about just briefly, and that is our debt service. Debt service is loans on bonding, so in twenty nineteen, nineteen, we went out for some bonding. We get money to, to build a venture and then we continue to bond a little bit. And so our, our debt service does have to be recognized in there and I think right now it's about fifty million or yeah, fifty million a year in debt service that comes, that goes to pay bonds. So, any questions on this pie chart?
Mark, I have one question, sorry, this is Lauren, um, I saw Senate Bill two fifty-seven, which is an orbital bill for the state budget. That impacts funding to the state highway fund. I just wanted to know, does that impact any projects in our region? I know there's some reductions and then some funding gets increased. Are you familiar with?
Okay, so, eh, so which bill was this?
Senate Bill two fifty-seven.
Um, the one, I do know that the long bill that covers our, that went through the JBC, because Colorado is a billion dollars. They, they're having to come up with money, I know they did take some money from transportation, I know revitalized main streets. Um, pretty much got wiped out for the future, um, they did take some MMOF money. But again, it may impact the overall budget, but I don't know how it will directly impact Lake County until the bill is actually signed. And it goes through our, our, our Office of Finance Management and Budget. Once I know all that come July, then I'm, I'll be happy to, to relate it to you, I just don't know how, once all the process is done on that, how it will specifically affect various regions and their full accounts. Because all funding, once it, it goes to CDOT as a whole and then it goes to the regions. And then we distribute it through the various counties and through programs.
Okay, thank you.
So I will get back to you on that when I know, but right now I just, I just don't know specifics on it.
Yeah, it's, I don't think it's even just Lake County specific, if it impacts I seventy or folks getting to our county and some of those main highways, it would be helpful to know some of those projects.
You bet, and, and we do watch those, they kind of report at STACK and Transportation Commission what's going on at the legislature. So if you get a chance, um, or Brian, if you know any better, any more on that than I do. Um, but I will get, I will talk to our, we do have a policy, we have, have an Office of Government Affairs and Policy. I'll ask them if they have any early ideas, the impact, but I know we're gonna be impacted, we just don't know how, how big of an impact.
Thank you.
Okay. So any other questions on this pie chart specifically? Okay, the next one, if you go to the next slide, this is where really I want to talk and focus in how Lake County, and I'm trying to, to catch up here. How Lake County can really um, and determine certain fundings. So the first funding, the strategic funding, that is a very big allotment of funds. The Lake County through the TPR does have comments that they can give and, and, and they can suggest prioritization. But most of the prioritization guidelines and allocation of that is determined by the Transportation Commission. Or other legislators, legislative bodies that give us the funds. A lot of the funding is not flexible, it has to be used to certain things. So this is where I'm going, so then the next one, the regional priority program, that is the product, that is the funds and we get fifty million a year statewide. Um, Region Three gets about seven million a year for all fifteen counties, it's not a lot, but we get about seven million a year. And that's what we use to design and sometimes construct projects within Region Three. That are determined, um, we work with the TPRs and the MPO to help determine what priorities are important and what can be done. So Vale Pass, for example, it was a multi-hundred-million-dollar project, there was RPP early on in that process to design, get it out. And then we've also put RPP project, money, funding to that, um, to help, to help get, get constructed. These were, this was a priority for both the Intermountain TPR and all the other four TPRs within Region Three. So they've helped kind of, they've given a little funding of their own to, to help Vale Pass and help the Intermountain TPR. But we really tried to visit with the TPRs and get them to talk to us about priorities and, and, and what they feel like their um, main priorities are. The blue, these are programs, it's called asset management and these are not flexible at all, these are done through management programs, so like you were talking about the roundabouts, there's a good chance that those, when they get funded, if and when they get funded, they will be funded by a safety fund or others because those, they, that's what they fall under. Our bridge-on system, our culver, our walls and surface treatment, those are also all managed through the best we can with different funding, go ahead, there's, was there a question?
No.
Okay, so a lot of these programs, they have management systems or specific qualifications that tend to say, this is where you need to put these funds. And those are determined by either the Transportation Commission or other, like the feds to say, you've got to put a certain percent to the interstate. Um, so that's kind of why we went through those, those governing bodies first. That way you can say, well, why aren't we getting more here? Well, because there's no, we can't do anymore than what we can do, for example, surface treatment, that can only fund edge payment to edge payment. It really can't go to build shoulders. But we can find RPP at times to help build chain stations or, or shoulders. And we've used freight funding to build chain stations on twenty-four and, and other such. So I believe that's the last, and next one is questions, um. Is there any questions that you have for me on funding or any other things that I might try to answer for you?
Um, where, where might one find where there's openings or vacancies for transportation committees?
Um, so the Governor appoints the Commissioners. And then the STACK Advisory Committee, that is the, typically the Chair of the Intermountain of, of the TPR. But there's also like Safe Routes to School Committee that you could go on and look at. Um, there's some other bike head committees, we don't have a lot, but there are some and I can kind of um, talk to DTD or others, I know Dana has her hand raised.
Yeah, Dana, go for it.
Yeah, one thing, I don't think we mentioned in our introductions, but as part of one of the counties in the IMTPR, you all have a voting member, so every one of the counties and municipalities as far, and as well as the regional transit authorities each have a vote. So you all have a say in the IMTPR. Um, I know that's not specific to your question as far as state boards, but I did want to mention that if we didn't talk about it. Um, and then there's also a, I'm on this multimodal community advisory board. Um, they're another department and they talk to D, DTD. Um, so trying to integrate multimodal and transportation and make sure that their, their project lists are talking to each other. So I'm happy to put you in touch with the folks there if you're interested on that advisory committee. Um, yeah, just wanted to put those things out there.
So DTD stands for the Division of Transportation Development and they're over um, several things, including the planning. And so, yeah, they'd be a good resource as well.
Okay, I'm so sorry, I don't, I definitely need more help understanding this, so what does the transportation com, what is the relationship between the Transportation Commission and the IMTPR? And the regions? If you are explaining that, I'm so sorry, it's just not.
No, 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 so if you want to go back, then that would be like slide three or four, let's go back to slide three, so. And again, knowing now kind of some of your questions, so the statewide transportation commission, these representatives are appointed by the Governor. And Barbara Bowman is a great representative, she represents Lake County, you can contact her and visit with her. They are the governing board, they approve budgets, they approve policy, they approve right-of-way takes and various other things. They meet once a month and again, like I said, there's YouTube uh, recordings out there for the last year, I believe, that you can kind of see what they do. You can contact them, now, the STACK, so if you go to the next slide, the STACK is an advisory committee, they advise the commission on different things, so let's say one of the, one of the ones that you might be familiar with was, there was an issue with, they wanted to create another TPR, this involved Lake County. There was a lot of stuff and, and a lot of stuff going back and forth that statewide. This involved Lake County. There was a lot of stuff and, and a lot of stuff going back and forth. The statewide advisory committee said, we think things are good the way they are, and the commission looked at that. And they went through a whole process, process of is it or is it not? Now, the Transportation Commission didn't have to take advice, and sometimes they haven't taken the advice. But other times they have always listened, not other times, they've always at least listened to STACK representatives. And, and at least the STACK Chair, the STACK Chair reports at commission. And tells them what happened at STACK and goes on. Um, and so that's the closest you can get to really defining the relationship. So your way, you have two ways. You can talk to Barb Bowman directly, or you can visit with Brian Pettit. And at the next STACK meeting, he could say, hey, this is what's going on. These are issues you're facing in Lake County. And that can be reported then to the Transportation Commission.
Okay, so the, so STACK is one of the many transportation commission committees that informs the Transportation Commission.
Yes.
Okay, and thank you. Thank you so much.
No, this is fine. I, I enjoy this. And, and again, I don't know if I'm on a certain timeline, but tell me, you know, I can, I can stay as long as you need.
Thank you so much. And this is probably like just historical shenanigans, but why on earth are the trans- why are the TCs different from the why are the, the TPRs?
Okay, excellent question, actually. And I, I wouldn't really call it historical shenanigans. I mean, they're out there, don't get me wrong, but so the Transportation Commission has existed since the state was there. And so if you want to look at those districts, I don't know how often they change those districts. But those districts are fairly set, you know, they tied, did talk years ago about.
Mark, if, if I can cut to the chase, the question.
Yes.
Which is, so the Transportation Commission makes rules for CDOT to follow and distributes money. And they are the final governing authority for CDOT.
Yeah.
The STACK, of which I'm a member because I'm Chair of the Intermountain Region, we are just advisory. We're just giving advice to the Transportation Commission based on our agenda or their agenda. So that's kind of how it flows. Um, the involvement with the Intermountain Region is just, just an advisory role. That's, we, we really don't have a lot of authority other than that.
Yeah, I, I got that. Thank you so much. I, I do want to hear what else Mark had to say though about why they're different.
Well, the, the transportation, uh, the, the TPRs were created in the nineties. Under the whatever transportation bill that was that came out in the nineties. All these districts were created and the, the state was told, create these planning districts. So they created the five MPOs and then they limited it fifteen TPRs and they just drew up the boundaries. And again, they've gone over boundary discussion various times throughout, but the boundaries have pretty much stayed, but those are set in legislature. And the STACK was made by a legislative bill by law to advise the Transportation Commission. So it gives the kind of a group of people an ability to advise the, the transportation, Transportation Commission. That it's not just a governing board that has nobody to kind of, and not answer to, but to visit with. So that's how, various layers were set up through history is the best answer and the easiest.
And, and was STACK created at the same time that HUTF was and all of that allocation?
HUTF has been around since the fifties. It came with the first highway bill through Eisenhower. Um, I just did some research on this for something else the other day and I was kind of following. The, the gas tax gets voted on or increased through various highway bills. And usually the highway bills last about six years, and so they, there are various ones. Um, we're on IIJA, and I can't remember the initials for, or what, but with, anyway, there's a new highway bill about every six years. And it goes through the spending process. Um, and at one time in the nineties, they said, hey, we need better planning, and so that's what created STACK.
Okay. And with STACK, STACK is made up of the chairs of each one of the TPRs and the MPOs. So it's very confusing. But looking at the TPRs, so you start with the TPR. You've got municipalities, counties, regional transit authorities. So that's the TPR. Then you go one layer above, and that's STACK. And so STACK has the chair or vice chair or a member of one of each of those TPRs or MPOs. And then they advise the Transportation Commission.
Lord, thank you. And Barb, Barbara Bowman, I remember that name from scenic byway. Wasn't she a scenic byways commissioner?
She's been involved in a lot of tourism. Um, she lives in Grand Junction, um, and, but she's, I know she's been involved in a lot of tourism efforts and, uh, so yeah, she may have been on the scenic byway group.
Okay. Cool.
And Mark is super open to talking to anybody. She's very approachable. She's very willing to have conversations. She comes to the IMTPR meetings. Brian and I try to meet with her on occasion just to kind of keep her updated. Um, so, yeah, she's very open to have, to chatting and wanting to know what's, you know, going on in your.
Thank you. Um, Matt, weren't you assigned to the transportation from, from the board? Have you been involved in these IMTPR meetings? Okay. Are you, are you good?
Yeah.
Just wondering, since we're all here talking about this, now that I understand what this is. Um, just wanted to double check that we're at the table.
I'll fulfill that duty.
Thank you. That's fabulous.
I do have Matt down as your primary voter. Hold on.
Yeah, just wanted to know.
Yes.
Yeah, and if I get an invitation. If I get an invitation to the meeting in Glenwood, I'd be happy to show up and, you know, in person.
Great.
I'll resend that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Um, let's, let's keep moving along. I think we're over time on this, uh, section. So just in the interest of time, let's streamline what we can moving forward.
Thank you all so much for answering questions. I really appreciated that.
We always have so many questions, so apologies for that.
Yeah, I just put no pro, no apology needed at all. I just put my number in there. Feel free to contact me. I'm happy to answer questions about funding or policy or how Region Three itself works.
Awesome. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Dana. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you for giving, thank you for giving us this time and, and developing the relationship. And I would like, maybe I'll close with this. Our in, uh, transportation, uh, planning meetings are open to the public. So whoever wants to show up can show up and participate.
Awesome. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for that, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. And I'll send a couple of follow-up things to Sandra to just disseminate to you all. Um, and as always, you can reach out to me if you're like, what does this mean? And if I don't have an answer, I can point you to whoever that might be.
Thank you, Dana.
Great. Thanks, Dana.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you all.
All right. You guys have a good day. It was nice chatting with yous.
Yep.
You too. See you soon.
See ya. Alrighty. Sorry for running over on that one.
Can I, can I just say, I, I, I know that we're running over, but I also think that like we never have those people in this room, so I I don't feel bad about running over. I'd rather ask the questions now and run a little late today. But I do get that you, you have another meeting after this, so I will honor that.
Yeah.
So long as our opportunity.
And now that we've got all their contact info, we know who to reach out to and why. We can keep it forward with that because it's fascinating. A road's a car will shape that. I want to know why. So, it's not your fault, Mike.
Um, I did have one comment that I tried to get earlier while I was talking. Um, I do have an update on the roundabout at two lakes. It goes to bid in October. So it doesn't mean they have funding for it yet. That's just me being a bit of a.
Really seems backwards. Okay, um, let's.
I was, I was kind of surprised you're not a part of the safety program, because when I go through those things, it's not safe.
You know, some more passing lanes on ninety-one and twenty-four, you know, on the Leadville five hundred would probably be safer than, you know, add more safety element than roundabouts, but, you know, I'm not a TPR, STACK or a TC involved yet.
It's just that there's been so many accidents with fatalities and death in the section, especially in the last ten years.
Okay, that's the one, huh?
So that's why it's a safety concern.
It's hard to see people coming. You do that.
Yeah, you can't see either direction. You can't see cars coming up to that intersection.
And everybody's turning and, yeah.
And then people will fall.
Yeah, yeah.
And if you miss a stop sign coming down the river, I see a couple of those, they're right over.
Into the river. Um, agenda item number two, a presentation of a potential monument to honor the Mosquito Pass Borough Race. This is led by Lisa Sandoval and Hal and Harrison Walter.
All right. Well, I'm Lisa Sandoval. Um, I would say it's more of the Leadville Park Borough Race, and by the way, it's been called Mosquito Park Borough Race at, at some point. Um, for those maybe not familiar with Leadville Park Borough Race, it started here in nineteen forty-nine, right over there at Harrison, Sixth and Harrison. It's a famous starting point for a few of our events. Um, so it's a pretty cool, I think it's a pretty cool historical thing that we can like take ownership of. Same year it's ski drove. I'm not really sure what the sound is like.
Yeah, that's kind of, yeah.
Yeah, they're like, we gotta do something here. Um, so there's a legend of, of the history of packer racing and um, I mean, if you guys have any questions about that, but about twenty-five years ago, um, the Western Packer Association led by Dave Teney, and Cal was included in that whole. Um, it got these monuments ready for Fair Play in Leadville. Um, the one in Fair Play, um, is up and it was put up twenty-five years ago. So the plaque's on there, all the past winners, all the way back from nineteen twenty-nine. So the history, what happened is it started in Leadville and over Mosquito Pass to Fair Play. Alternated years, so then it went from Fair Play to Leadville. And then, of course, there was probably some drama.
Well, it was six years it went, just from Leadville to Fair Play, and then everybody in Leadville started catching on and Fair Play was getting the better, you know.
And you did the fun end.
Yeah, exactly. They started alternating.
Yeah, so then it became the, the international. I don't know if it was Fair Play was the world championship.
Somebody decided to call Leadville the international.
Or the international, not just Leadville Pack Borough Race. Um, but we have been talking about this for the last few years of getting it, so I'm not sure what happened twenty-five years ago, um, and guys.
It just got thrown off. It just like fell off.
I think they kept running into roadblocks. And I mean, it's been hard to even meet with you guys, so I'm really excited that we're here, meeting with you. Um, so thank you for your time. Um, so the idea, and Hal'll jump in at any time because Hal's kind of the designer behind it. Is to, um, get a monument that you all are, are okay with and approve here on the courthouse county property. I think that's a fitting place. We were kind of thinking about, um, Zayt's Park for a little while. Um, but that really didn't make a whole lot of sense because that's not where the race started and it's not gonna, um, you know, there's gonna be a lot of.
Give the attention over there.
Give the attention. Okay. This one, that one in Fair Play is at Prunes Memorial, right there at the race start. Um, and it's just, it's a really cool landmark, so I really hope that we can, you know, bring something.
And it's a, you know, I, I hear about it, you know, people, and I saw that, you know.
People take pictures.
It's like people take pictures with it and they find their family members that ran in, you know, nineteen fifty-two near past now. They're, they take a picture with their family member who won the race that, whatever year. It's, it's well visited over there.
Is there any informational element to that, or is it just strictly have the names of past winners?
Well, that's something that I wanted to discuss. I think we would like to somehow incorporate an informational, like a one sentence thing.
I mean, I was thinking of just at least where packer racing first began. It's also Colorado's official summer heritage sport. Um, I'm not sure how many years ago that was, maybe ten years ago that that kind of became official. It'd be not even quite that long. So those kind of things might be nice. I'm not sure what else I have in mind, but I think it's a true historical landmark that we can really, um.
Kidding. And speaking of history, the, the, the word plank for that's been on garage since twenty, it's been there for twenty-five years.
Not sure where somebody used that plank, but we might.
And, and a little side story, um, my son graduated at CMC.
Sure.
Sure.
Um, from CMC with welding certificates, and so he is like ready to weld this for the students. We have, we have all that lined up. We saw the, 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 um, the wood. We, um, have located some uh, narrow gauge rail track to make three out of, um, cherry, cherry coo or something else for that. And, um, we're looking at, uh, who, who can get the, I don't know, last book on the continent still a lot, a couple of ones, which, uh.
And so the Western Packer Association is sponsoring it. We have like two thousand that we raise and we can raise more, so it wouldn't be like any kind of unaccounting from the county. And then the Leadville Pack Borough Race has committed to, um, continuing it on. So we will get it erected. We will get installation. We'll get all the plaques, the historical plaques made. The plaques, by the way, are going to be like one and a half by five inches. That's about how big those plaques are on here, and so that's the size, um, six and a half feet. So the thing itself is six and a, six feet by two feet about.
Right. And there's a couple of things I learned from the Fair Play one. Um, afterwards, I wished I had designed it vertical because it's really taught that thing. And, um, and then people who were short got a hard time reading the names at the top, so. Um, and originally we had planned to go horizontal with the Leadville one. This would be different. Now I'm a hundred percent like, and with the horizontal, do I have not? Um, exactly sure on the exact height of the, the drawings about where I'm thinking by level for most people.
And we talked about the real over rail. That was all the deals.
Yeah, I wanted to look kind of, you know, new, new west, rustic, um, fitted with the decor of.
And then look.
Oh, did you see anything that jumps out right away with the new sign code, stuff that just passed?
That was just good. I was actually having the same exact thought.
Where did this tree?
It's a, it's a sculpture. It's an old Indian town sign.
Okay.
Right.
All right.
It's not advertising like a business.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it's, yeah.
Okay.
Do you, um, I love the idea of it being on the county courthouse property. Um, and is there, like, it started on E-sixth, didn't it?
Actually, I think it started at the flagpole of the courthouse.
It started at the.
At the flagpole? Okay, cool.
Yeah, it always has.
Sweet. I just want to see if there were other places that we could also offer that could get it as close to the actual start as possible, but if it was still
I believe it's the flagpole or.
Okay. And my kind of ideas of having it like right outside this wall?
Probably right outside of here where the, um, one is going to be over.
Yeah. Hal was right.
There, I'm just not sure now with the courthouse.
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 Right, yeah.
Moving that area. I'm wondering if it'd be better near the street where people were taking.
And I was thinking this on either one of them.
Yeah.
Because I feel that we put a ten F right out in front in the summertime.
Yeah.
That it might get, you know, damaged or something. I don't want that.
Yeah.
But maybe on one, either side of the, so, uh, ladder up in front to.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm thinking the, we need to dig two feet.
Right.
To that save those sort of plans.
I just, uh, I think, uh, it's cool, but it's real simple. It's gonna be a monument sign. I, my, my thought is it should be more like a real monument, like metal and, you know, like, uh, it's just, it's very simple. And it's made out of wood and how long is it gonna last?
Well, no, no, it's a metal frame.
It's a metal frame.
Yeah, it's all metal frame. It's only wood, it's only wood is the plank that we put the plaques in.
Okay.
And it would look kind of rusted, but the rest of it is railroad, narrow gauge railroad frame.
Okay.
And, um, actually, we're gonna get, um, a local person to plane that or to fit the webbing. New gauge rail. It's a little bit like.
And then the, the group will take care of that wood, so it's gonna deteriorate over time.
Right. Yeah, and that's another thing we learned from over there. You really need to keep that wood treated.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, we're up to other ideas too, so if you have something else that we're, we're gonna.
Well, this, this is a real simple drawing. I want, I, I've got a collection of, um, of horse burrow shoes that have actually been in the race. So I'm, I have kind of an envision of some of those that are on the top.
Yeah.
Um, well, along there as well.
Cool. Um, and we, have you all talked to Adam Ducharme, who was in the, yeah? It'd be cool if we could do, um, like one of the, just somewhere on the board, if there could be like a QR code that could land on county webpage, that could even like host more information about the packer, borough races. That could always link to the most current, um, website, but we could house some of that historical information on. We could house some of that historical information on our website.
Okay.
So that you wouldn't have to like do too much on the actual one.
Well, you, I. Actually have a a book about pack row racing, there's a whole chapter about the history and beginning of it, it's a lot about Leadville history.
Cool.
And some of the characters that were from Leadville that were originally some of the winners, you know, and right up to Martin, um, meaning these days, but um,
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, like um, Dr. Bernard Smith was a winner, so he was a veteran or, you know, he won this a lot of years.
Well, yeah, that'd be too much to.
Joe Lapp was involved, yeah, Joe Lapp, he won like nine times.
Tom Silver, I guess.
Tom Silver, yeah, I mean Tom Silver did here when you wanted, he won a bunch of times, yeah.
Well, yeah, two pages would be too much to put on to the board.
Or your website, yeah.
Yeah, well, we could put it on the website, yeah.
Yeah, we could just, you know, snag that out on our book.
Yeah, awesome.
I'm all for it, maybe you should talk to uh, planning department and I mean, like I say, I'd like to see more of a monument type sign with a bigger base and like something that's really substantial.
So we could use bigger metal for the posts to hold it up, um, and I think when we get the borough shoes, we could go all the way around it to, I mean, I've got quite a few, I might probably collect some for you too.
Yeah, make it weird.
Okay.
They have put a bunch of effort into the signage, so they may have more thoughts and guidance.
And then, you know, another thing I might add is to, um.
It was a schoolyard, it'd be cool to have like the gold pan, pick and, yeah, shovel was all required, so I'm on there and what?
Yeah, something like this could be like sandwiched within a, you know, almost like a frame and then a monument style sign where the posts come off the sides all the way, so it's kind of like a, yeah, like that's.
Post off the sides and.
I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure Charlie's got some old um, some old cable from lifts that we, that he could weld into more of a
Really?
That could look like a rope, because don't you have to have a rope on the burrow too?
Okay.
Yeah.
So that could be cool, I don't know, rope, I don't know.
What we're seeing is we love the idea.
Yes.
Okay, let's let's take it up the notch, okay, yeah.
Do more, do more like that.
Is there any other money, I mean, I guess they ought to be, Charlie might know that for the tourism, for the challenge.
Yeah.
We might be able to scrounge a little.
The funny thing is we're kind of building it out of junk, right, so it's like, um, it shouldn't cost that much, it's a, yeah, it's for.
Right. Right, well, the tourism panel might have, they might have something to work going to them, yeah.
Yeah, I want, I I wanted to get something, the signal, but we didn't together, that's why that's.
I'm happy to.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, happy to talk about other, you know, funding options too, like you come up with something.
And there, I mean, they're okay with, as long as it's still okay to, you know, for the WPWPDA to sell merchandise of the start of the Borough Race, we've been on there the last couple of years and they'd be happy to help them, that makes a lot of sense.
Cool.
So I think we see, did you're okay, uh, I mean, you have any of putting it, you have where to put it and all that stuff, if you have any other parameters, but we'll, we'll keep it up and.
Yeah.
Go, go forth with our blessings.
So what is the next step for us?
I think we're, I'm sorry, we're. Well, we have to work with Michael to see where to put it.
Okay.
If we, especially if we keep the base, the base can stay the same or if you wanna come back with a different idea, but Michael would be the person to chat with, connect with the person.
Do you think they should check into the planning?
I can put you in contact with him.
Yeah, I didn't want a sign, it's a, it's a, it's a sculpture, it's a monument, not a, sort of sign.
Yeah. So it's outside the sign code?
I'll make it.
It's gonna have a little lights.
I'll make sure that we're hundred percent good.
Yeah, yeah.
We can do lights from the ground.
Yeah.
That might be a whole other.
That would get sick.
That would get sick.
That would get sick.
Yeah, dark, dark, dark sky compliance.
Might need one stop. Well, that's too bad, because we might actually have it.
But downtown, but downtown, it's pretty bright, like you're not.
Yeah.
It's pretty bright downtown, we got streetlights, we got.
Probably see like a solar light.
It it may be helpful just to review the new sign codes, they're not, they've missed a lot of time and effort on that and uh, just to quit, you know, see if you can make them look quicker.
Yeah.
And some of the examples look really nice and would be, would enhance this idea if applied to it, you know, just especially when we're talking about monument style, I think.
It's a mon- yeah, monument style is a type of sign, it's like.
I know, that's what I'm saying, like we could make it, so this is a monument, we can make it a monument style sign and it's look pretty snazzy, you know what I'm saying?
I don't know, maybe someone, blend in some of the way finding signs with the city, you know.
Yeah, I have, I have an old, really old wooden house that, that might be a, what's it, fun, you know, it's like.
Cool.
Do you have a little metal rope, do you say?
Oh, really?
If Charlie doesn't have his cable.
Can we unveil it at the next, right?
Well, that's what we're making, we need to get it, get it done this summer.
That would be something awesome, yeah.
Well, don't let us stand in your way.
Yeah, go for it.
We can start manufacturing it. We can go ahead and start doing that.
Yeah.
And Lauren will have, Lauren will have connected you all, Lauren will have connected you.
We didn't wanna do too much and you'd be like, ah, no.
Yeah, no, keep us in the, in the, in the loop on the final design of it, you know, it's, we're gonna look at it every day, going to work.
Yeah.
I love it already.
Yeah.
Well, don't hold back.
Thanks.
Cool.
Thank you, team.
Appreciate you guys coming in, thanks, this is fun.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Alrighty, agenda item number three.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Alright, we have a presentation and update on the courthouse renovation project. All the fun, exciting things today. Sorry, tight squeeze, we really need a bigger room.
Welcome to me.
So the people to tell her to.
And I'm thinking so.
Because. Speaking of, we need a bigger room, this is the, the group to bring that up though, right?
Yes, we fully support you guys, we need a bigger room too.
Yes, I hope so.
Hey, this is what you. Um, if you just let me do the horse, like you want to do that, I can show you my slums.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, it should be able to take a shot. Is Todd with you all? Was he in town?
I don't.
No, I just, I just, okay, there he is, saw him, he's in his truck.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'd be there today, but I had a family event that I had, I could not avoid.
No worries.
Yeah.
Uh, there we go, okay. Alright, hello, everybody, um, I'm Colleen Kaneda, I have not yet met you all as a new board, so it's great to be here in person. Um, I'm with Dynamic Program Management, we're the owners representative for the Lake County Justice Center project, um, I actually, my first project in Lake County, I live over in Eagle County, so I'm not too far away, um, my first project in Lake County was the high school addition and renovation in two thousand and twelve. Um, I remember it fondly because I was pregnant with my second son who is now in sixth grade, um, so that was twelve years ago. And um, worked on the elementary school project and some of the school district work and then got to meet folks over here in the county, helped um, on the reboot of the Southern Fire Station project and um, now with the the Justice Center project, so um, we have been through a few different things and I, um, my plan today was to introduce you to the team, um, show you what we've been up to lately, do a real quick history of how we got to where we are today and then open it up really for your questions and discussion and um, your input. So, uh, thanks again for having us, I see we have our judicial folks here in the room, um, thank you so much for being here and of course, Sheriff Speckman and Michael have been part of this um, all along as well, um, online, we have uh, Mike Potter with um, FCI Constructors. FCI is our CMGC, our Construction Manager General Contractor Partner, um, let me see, I can open this up. I see, uh, Todd Reaper, um, is with DPM, he's with my team, Jim McLaren is on, he is with MWL, he is our subject matter expert on uh, law enforcement and courts facilities. And he will explain a little bit more about his role as we get through this presentation. Uh, we also have Fernando and Pete who are with, um, who are with Jims from MWL and Elizabeth, who's with the courts. Um, she's the architect uh, for the state courts, I think I hit everybody as far as introductions. We are all here, um, we've all been working together for a, quite a, quite a while now, um. So what we're gonna talk about today are, you know, just the existing building that we're in today, some of the solutions that were previously evaluated, some of the work that was done in twenty-three, when we, when we pivoted away from the full Justice Center over at Monroe Street, um, as well as twenty twenty-four. How we got uh, MWL engaged and then Jim's gonna run us through, which I hope will take the bulk of the time today, um, the programming and the concept design of what he has um, so far put together and then we'll talk about the next steps in the timeline of everything that we've been planning on. So our existing facility is we're sitting in today, is bu- uh, built in the middle, middle fifties, um, definitely, we all know who, uh, everybody who's been in this building quite a bit knows that it has a lot of deficiencies and that the jail had closed in two thousand and nineteen. We had, uh, among others, I should say, but these are probably the biggest milestones, some of the solution, big picture solutions that have been evaluated previously. Um, the county had been looking at a few different sites, they ended up acquiring the site at Monroe, um, so there was um, building new at Monroe site, which did go all the way through design process. Uh, we talked about building and remodeling on this site and then some sort of hybrid, um, that would be some uh, form of using both sites for the needs. Um, back in twenty twenty-three, after we again pivoted away from the large Justice Center um, building over at Monroe, we presented the commissioners with five different options, which was, this is all the hybrid um, options with building the new Justice Center and all sorts of different options, um, in between with renovating here, building on new here. And um, unfortunately, as you'll see in the next slide, the budget, um, really uh, caused a pause for the commissioners, um, concerned about putting the county into that type of um, debt service payback, um, and you can see that the least expensive one there is option A-one, which is the new Justice Center and that was sixty-five million all in and all of the rest of the options were much higher. So at that time, the commissioner said, come back with some other options that aren't as expensive. So in twenty twenty-four, uh, we continued to do some more options, uh, when with Tim Bergman leading the way on some things and Lauren, of course, um, coming on board. So we looked at renovating the existing law enforcement and detention here, about seventy-two hundred square feet, at about twelve million dollars. We looked at an addition to this building, um, I think it was maybe gonna go in the front of the building up there for offices, um, that was an additional seven point four million and then a renovation of the existing courts upstairs was another seven million dollars. We also had thrown in, um, the school district had approached uh, the county about LCIS, I'm sure you're up to speed on that, and then the McGregor Building next door. We did do some real high level studies, but ultimately, those two were kind of not pursued, um, I think fairly early on in this study. So after that, uh, the direction we received from the board, um, was really to prioritize detention and law enforcement space as the priority. And then, um, courtroom security, so not the full courtroom remodel, but definitely upgrading the security was a priority for an ad alternate, um, as well as some building envelope improvements and that's like your windows and roofing, we know that there are some needs here, uh, Michael has that list, I'm sure memorized. Um, that was a priority and then, uh, the district attorney's office has some deficiencies as well, um, that the commissioners were interested in, in addressing if budget was available. So we've been working towards a, or with a seventeen million dollar budget, um, the COPs, I believe, have been issued, um, at eight million dollars. And then general fund contribution was set at five million and then, um, the congressionally directed spending is three and a half million and then we still have a underfunded courts grant at half a million dollars, I think that's, has been used for some of the planning and I think quite a bit of that has been spent to date, no, because not.
No, we had a, we had a previous grant that we have spent, but this is a new allocation that we just moved awarded.
Okay. And then, of course, you know, with a lot of projects, um, especially in Lake County, uh, we always are trying to understand how we can leverage other grants to increase our budget that isn't an impact to the taxpayer or to the county's budget. So I'm gonna turn it over to Jim McLaren to introduce himself a little bit in more depth, um, and we will talk through his um, concept drawings today. So Jim.
Great, thank, thank you, Colleen, I hope, hopefully I'm coming through okay, I never know, I'm not the best technical geek in, in the world. Um, a little bit of background, uh, about our firm, McLaren Wilson Laurie, uh, we're an architectural firm that works nationally and internationally. Uh, we've completed about five hundred police facilities, courts, forensic science laboratories, communication centers, training fac- uh, facilities in uh, all but four states, we're still looking for four more, um, and we've done quite a few projects in Colorado, including uh, the ones listed uh, there, uh, in the mountains, we, we were the technical subject manager expert consulting architect on Aspen, um, Avon, uh, Montrose and currently performing that function on the new uh, Chaffee County Sheriff's Facility in Salida. We operate on a somewhat unique, um, uh, manner in that we work upfront, usually as an owner's advisor and try to scope a project, um, get it ready to uh, be able to price and then, um, then our feeling is that you benefit at that point, once the technical side is uh, formed to uh, have the team, um, added on and led by a local architect. And then we remain available for any technical questions, uh, that they may have associated with uh, specialty areas in the building. So the goal is that this allows you to broaden your perspective or spectrum of available firms that you wanna choose from. So many of the projects you see, uh, listed above were performed that way, where we were the owner's technical advisor. So that's the, the uh, uh, manner in which we've been working and uh, uh, so far as Colleen said, we were retained to initially uh, do a space needs, um, analysis with sheriff and the sheriff staff, we toured the existing buildings, um, building. Got, um, uh, a preliminary list of information, uh, that we were, uh, reviewed relative to site and touring the building, taking photos, all sorts of things. And then we had uh, our initial stakeholder meetings, um, so, uh, the concentration of time clearly was in the sheriff for this first phase and once the that initial goal of trying to uh, compose the building to be able to uh, uh, address those space, then we would be uh, following up to do more in-depth analysis for all the balance of the spaces in the building, so that ultimately we're planning uh, adjustments to the building that would be compatible with each other down the road and give you a pay-as-you-go sequence to be able to implement them. Um, so, um, I apologize, there's a lot of wind and it sounds like in my, uh, uh, so I hope you're, I hope you're hearing me okay. Okay, good, 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 okay, then, um, if we could, um, we have started the process of developing an initial concept plan and I caution that this is really something that we call a test fit. And it starts to look at how, uh, the spaces that are been identified, um, by the, uh, in this case, the first uh, segment of the work, the sheriff. How, uh, we could, uh, uh, accommodate the best way possible, uh, recomposing their offices, detention area, et cetera, with an eye towards being able to get a circulate, safe and secure, uh, security link to the courts. So, uh, if we can, um, let's go ahead and, uh, I'd like to, um, uh, share a screen maybe and then we can, um, uh, go into some of our preliminary, um, uh, work, so Fernando, if you, yes, go ahead.
Um, so Fernando, uh, you want Fernando to share his screen?
Yes, please.
I think you should be able to, Fernando, I think I just have to stop.
Oh, okay. Yay, so far, so good. Okay, so if we were in the helicopter, looking down on, on your, your building. One of the first things that we were charged with was looking at the building in totality and its site. How do we create a more safe and secure environment, one that works for all the tenants of the building? And how do we compose the building so that we can get a vertical transportation? Route securely into the, into the courts from where detention could be. Now, we looked at a variety of options. One of the options was if there was an ability to. Put a Sally port or a suspect transfer garage, if you will, in what is presently the alley behind. The courts building between the, the courts building and the annex. We did get a previous survey and information back that shows that, that alley was actually vacated. As part of the project initially from the city. So what we're proposing, looking at the whole site would be. To examine how to potentially create a little bit more parking and create a safe and secure environment ultimately for staff. So there's, we are showing two gates being added. That would be vehicle gates and that would allow. Staff from the county to proceed through the gate from either direction and park in what is now the open parking lot. So that way we could put a perimeter around that staffing area. So on days when you have festivals and events and things like that, it would, it would be. Have a security barrier between. Now, on this plan, you'll also see off to the right, there's something that says new staff or new Sally port. A Sally port is just a, it's colloquial castle terminology, Sally port through the portals. As a suspect transfer garage, it's just basically where you can safely take someone being transported in custody out of the back of the car. And move them into a secure processing area where they might be administered a breathalyzer test or something like that. So that, when we looked at that, trying to add another elevator within the footprint of the building would be. We think eats away at the building and would be a pretty difficult construction. So we're showing it as an addition. Let's go ahead, Fernando, and go into what would be the ground level. So for those that. Can imagine the existing shape of the building. What we've done here is we've taken the elements. The within the program requirements for the sheriff. And started to look at how they could work within the footprint of the building, because we know we have a very precise amount of budget that we. Have to hit. And we, we know that there are other consequences of every space that we look at. For instance, the, the planning folks are presently on that floor in an area that would be impacted. So this is not meant to be a final design, but what it does show is that if we were able to add a vehicular Sally port. To the right side of the plan there, then we could move the short-term holding detention cells that are upstairs. Down to this level. So if there was sheriff activities where they needed to bring someone in for an interview. They could do that in a secure environment. It provides them three holding cells plus a space where they can do certain processing activities, maybe blowing a toxilizer test, things like that. And it also provides a release area. When people arrive to pick up someone who may have been in custody. Now you'll see that that allows for an elevator vestibule to be added just outside the footprint. The Sally port, the elevator, the elevator vestibule, release vestibule, and elevator machine room would be new construction. So this also means that now with this. Someone in custody in the building could be transported through a secure route to the elevator. And then transport directly to courts, which we'll show you as we move through each floor. It also means that if the sheriff were to bring someone from, from another facility. That's in custody, but needs to come back to court in Lake County. They can also pull in that Sally port and take that person directly to the elevator vestibule and up. So, so what this starts to show is a space where you can pull in. And then have a vehicular parking garage secure out of the, out of the, you know, public eye. And then safely move someone into custody or up. So let's go back to the floor plan. So when we look at the balance of the spaces there, if we scroll up. We are currently showing a warming kitchen for the use of the custody area. Along with some storage space for supplies and, and food stuffs. And then we have space for the sheriff's detention staff. So if we scroll up a little further. You'll see that there are work, workstations for two detention deputies, two detention corporals, two sergeants, and the division captain. Presently, there are spaces on this floor as well for the patrol sergeants and reports, workstations for deputies. And corporals that begin or end a shift. Now, there's an armory on this floor as well to store deputy supplies and gear. And we have had a preliminary presentation of this to Sheriff Speckman. And there are some corrections and adjustments we'll be looking to make. So what you see here was our first pass. Now, if you scroll down, one of the elements that's also on this floor. Is also space for evidence. So we have a space where deputies can come in and package evidence, put it in a passer locker, and then the evidence tech can store it. This is all in the basement level. It also provides a safe and secure space for a citizen coming to pick up evidence or reclaim evidence. And then there's a room that's listed as discovery. Once in a while, we get requests for a secure evidence review. By a defense attorney or an investigator working on the case or someone so that evidence tech here can. I, you know, assemble the material and then monitor its examination prior to court. So that's how, you'll see that there's a lot of spaces on the floor that are untouched. And those are very specific because they're either mechanical space, the D A space. There's an emergency generator down here. There's a lot of infrastructure that we are trying to stay away from and not touch. When we move to the main floor of the courts, let's move up. Well, the first thing we need to do is be in a position to provide a home for the folks we displaced downstairs, the planning folks. So they're shown in a space just below the new elevator. But it has not, we have not configured those, the space planning, because first we wanted to show that as a prospective space. And then we'll need to sit down with the planning folks and make sure we've got their space right. Now, you can see that there is, the balance of the, the upper portion of that page is all secure spaces essentially for sheriff's offices. And what's shown is the sheriff, the patrol captain, undersheriff. An office for the operational support, support director. The rest of this floor for the sheriff's use. Has an emergency communication center that's shown in the top right. Right now, it is really space constrained downstairs in the building and, and doesn't really. We'd like to be able to provide it a more isolated and secure location. And there are certain criterias that go with any communication center. That is handles nine one one calls and that agency that typically governs those designs is called A P Co. And one of the things they do require is an individual space for restroom for the dispatcher. So that's why there is a new restroom built in the dispatch center. The balance of this floor then has the administrative assistance and the specialties. There's four positions, a conference room that's placed so that it's close to the communication center. It might get moved, but it, it was intended that it might support if there was ever. An emergency activation of like an E O C type event. Now, the ba, balance of the floor. Has space for victim services. And it has, they're waiting and interview room. This is one of the changes that we will be looking to make from the initial review from the sheriff. In that we're going to try to, to recompose this floor so that those elements can move into the security barrier. Zone past the stairs. Now, if we go, you can see in this first phase, then there is no other work proposed for this floor. So because this was that first step that Colleen identified. If we move up to the next floor. You can see that the major changes here is the addition of the elevator and the elevator vestibule. So when someone comes up the elevator, there is a cuffing bench shown in the elevator vestibule. So a person in, in custody can be held there until such time as their, the court. Requests their entry into the courtroom itself. So this allows for movement of someone in custody directly from that elevator vestibule into the courtroom. And we would likely be, when we get the opportunity now in the next phases to work with the court staff in more detail. We would likely look at trying to recompose this space so that the witness box would move, would flip in the court. And jury would also move so that we could potentially take the whole top of this floor. For judges' chambers above the stairs for jury deliberation and create specific security zones. As parts of the alternate for court safety. So that, that is kind of where, where we're at at this point. One other significant element that you'll see there is we did, in order to create security zones and minimize distances. So that we could potentially recompose space, we did move the staircase. That's, that would require essentially a slab cut on the other side of the column line there, we can see. And it slides it down. So we would be infilling the existing exit corridor. So that would, when we get to the court, we did a exiting load from the courtroom. And that position change does not violate the exiting requirement for a second exit out of the courtroom. So I know I, I just hit you all with a fire hose of information and I apologize for that. So if there are some questions that I can, we can start to try to address.
I've got a question.
Sure.
Sally port addition. Does that also have four, it looks, it looked from the elevation like the third floor just had the elevator shaft?
It, it, this is the, the, the third floor here. So yes, when it gets up to the third floor, all it adds is just the elevator and the holding room. There's no additional square footage shown. There's the Sally port and its machine room and the bond out on the first floor. And then the second floor is an addition where we were proposing that potentially there could be a movement for planning. Or perhaps victim services when we go back through and start to re, relook at those floors.
Just curious.
Yeah, it's a, is, this is a Rubik's cube. Your building is, it's kind of amazing, actually. Every time we tried to do something there, I was like, oh, wait a minute, you can't do that. So, but you know, I, at least this is our very first pass at it. But again, we are trying to look with a focus on staying within your, your budget constraints, which is, you know, essential. And then working into trying to create a series of security upgrades. One of the things that was helpful when we did that was the existing. And you've got a wonderful resource there and, and Michael, that helped us with finding information on this building. He knows where everything in this building is. But there, there, the, there isn't an easement or any major utilities running through that. That alley and you do have permission per the information on the original context with the city of the agreement to vacate it. So anyway, we are showing that. But you can see there kind of where the, where the Sally port enters, we would have to go back and, you know, recompose that, that parking lot. And we would be losing, you know, a couple of parking, two, three parking spaces over there. Now, when we reconfigured the existing secure parking lot on the other side of the building. Optimizing that parking there did allow for the addition of two additional spaces, full-size spaces. So there's total of twelve over there now instead of the present ten, so.
Go, go ahead, Lucian.
If you want to finish the presentation and then start discussions.
Sure.
Oh, okay. And we didn't know if you had questions on the design, you know, this was a lot to take in immediately.
Yeah, there's a lot there, I'm sorry.
I mean, I have a question, and there are no restroom renovations on the ground floor?
The ground floor, let's go to the ground floor, Fernando. The, there is no change in the restroom shown, no, well, on the ground floor, yes. You can see we added two restrooms.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the.
Main floor. Yeah, I know, it depends on which side of the building it come in, right? Let's go up one, Fernando, next floor. Okay, yes, we did not, we, at this point, we did not in, make any significant change to those restrooms. There, there apparently has been an A D A upgrade initially to these rooms. They do not look like the way they are shown right now. However, if that is a, you know, priority, it's. Added into the eventual scope, we could certainly take a look at those. But again, because the budget was tight, we're just trying to do just each increment.
Totally get that. There's only one, there's only one toilet in the women's restroom.
So I'm guessing, I'm guessing it's true because this plan is pre A D A enhancement, yeah.
Yep, and then the, the report, can you zoom in, please?
Sure. Yes, this, there is. It's right now, taking, sorry, I'm overlapping, I don't, I don't need to cut you off. Okay, the, yes, there, right now, there's a kind of a cool countertop there that's kind of been blocked off. And when you go into that little room, it was kind of cool. There's kind of the niche where, you know, a, a old switchboard used to be where somebody could, you know, talk to a visitor coming in and then connect your phone. But it's, that whole space has kind of been cannibalized to use, I think, in a self-help fashion for some break, you know, and coffee area. So one of the areas that we usually try to provide is a space where if. Someone comes up to meet with a sheriff's deputy or anyone in the building that, that wants to talk to them, you know, without taking them into the balance of the building, they could use this room. So it's just a report-taking or, or consultation room. It doesn't have to be sheriff's office, it could be for anyone.
Yeah, it's offering that it's a very public place. We don't have great, we don't have great traffic flow in that location to begin with. So just offering that that's not a very discreet location.
No, and for the type of, of discussion that we're seeing, we were anticipating here, it wouldn't be a discreet situation. It's, you know, someone who's coming in and just needs, I need to, you know, how do I fill in this form or whatever it turns out to be. Just because there is a more discreet interview room for victim services. Above with some waiting and we could certainly put a, a door in front of that. And that, that we're going to recompose anyway, because there was initial discussion from sheriff staff that. that this should move more in a secure location. And then there is also an interview room off the custody area downstairs.
Hey, James.
Yeah.
Did you have more?
I mean, I'd like seven more, go for it.
Go for it.
Has there been any previous discussion about what the dividing, the ratio between this, this room we're in right now, the, the B O C C room, and what's around us? What's surrounding us on most sides? What I see on a daily basis is that this room, you know, just for regular meetings, all, all other manner of meetings, I mean, right now, we've got 13 people in this room. What I see next, right next to us, between the entire clerk and recorder area, we've got between five and 10 people in that entire space on average. So has there been any previous discussion about realigning where the boundaries are between here, giving people who use this space? And this isn't just about my own personal, you know, crampedness in this room and how much time we spend in here. But is there, is there any, did anything talked or brought up about that at all? Or anything to change this room itself?
Colleen, maybe I'll ask you to talk through the scope and the sequence. But the short, short answer is yes, we'll be looking at trying to come up with a long-term sequential plan for, as money becomes available, here are some things you could do and then you'd have to prioritize them.
There are four stages of design and this is the very initial. So this isn't like where are things, where are desks going to go? This is just super high level. Jim's task for this presentation was really focused on law enforcement. So he has not really, and Jim's expertise isn't really going to be looking at the building envelope in this room. That will be when we get the architect of record on board and they will look at those types of things. Because those are things that they don't have to have expertise in law enforcement for. But if that's a desire, we'll certainly make sure it's on the list.
Okay, so this is just
Yeah.
From the law enforcement standpoint, thank you.
Can I just offer, it seems like a ton of staff. Do you have that many staff?
Yeah, you know, so that's part of the consideration was what is our bill, where are we going?
Right, yeah.
This is not something that you want to put a ton of time and effort into in a short period of time.
Yeah.
And so what we use is the organization chart of what we establish as our minimum staff levels. And with full consideration of all the other factors that we have going on here. And so, so that is where we're trying to get to.
Yeah.
What I call minimum staff levels. And part of our conversation is last time we were, I was initially exposed to this earlier, was we're using a lot of these spaces here too. So we're using some of the area dispatch, using some of the services area so we can try to fit more into it.
Okay, it's going to shrink a little bit. Your, the footprint of sheriff's department will shrink from this initial.
And we have already discussed some of those and they put that into their notes just to reconfigure, to shrink some of those areas. Where I think even in 10 years, we won't need some of that space that they drew in. So we're really dialing it down.
My initial impression is like, whoa, this is a huge amount of space for the sheriff's office to take up. And I, I just want to understand if that's a need or if it's just because we're just focusing on that department right now, especially with our renovation. And Lord, like, everybody needs space, so just want to make sure it's balanced.
And, and I would say that this is approximately where we're housed now with the, maybe an extra thousand square feet with
With the basement. Yeah, and the Sally port.
Yeah.
Yeah, totally.
Can I ask a question, Colleen, sort of the, the focus right now is on detention, I understand that. But I'm not sure how the court can't be part of that focus because that elevator, which we support, but that elevator changes the entire function of that courtroom. So that, the court's got to be part of it. We just can't put an elevator without the courts changing too because the court's now without elevator at all. That elevator's in the jury's room.
So they're going to check in with you on next to inform the next phase.
We just want to make sure that commissioners are aware that you can't do that without a court.
Total.
It is, and, and to be honest, what we tried to do first with this very first phase was to show, after synthesizing through some options, here's a way that it could work. And we wanted to get input from everyone here before we proceeded to take that detail further. But you're absolutely right. And if, if indeed this is a direction that we're given permission to pursue, A, yes, we'd be washing it on hot to try to make sure we're getting the spaces, you know, as space efficient as possible. But it, as I had mentioned in the courtroom, that would, it would require a complete reversal of the courtroom's layout in order to make it safer and more secure.
Yeah.
Should we hear from Elizabeth? Yeah, let's hear what Elizabeth has to say.
Well, thank you for including us in this discussion, I appreciate it. Couple of questions regarding the judicial perspective. First, regarding what you've shown here today as new construction, is that what you're thinking would cover the full budget? I know we're carrying a few alternates, but is what you've designed today inclusive of the whole budget? Or do you think that there's still funding available to include those renovations to the courtroom that were just mentioned?
So Elizabeth, these are hot off the press as of Monday. F C I just received them, so we don't know yet. We're, we're in pricing right now.
That's right.
I just made mention though that we would definitely need to include the courtroom improvements to that if we're adding the elevator. So I just want to make sure that the pricing would be inclusive of all the needed renovation for the elevator. So I don't know that that's been shared with F C I. Separate from that, if you could go to the site plan, please. Have you discussed the fire lane with the fire department to close off that alley?
We have not taken, the first concept was to show that that was conceptually a idea. And normally, the way that those gates would be operated would be with an opticon or with a transponder so that the ship, the fire would have the same 360 access around the building they always have. So they gave it open automatically for them.
Okay, great. And then I see that the Sally ports in the public parking, is there any concern having the secure vehicles adjacent to public vehicles?
No, because they, the, the secure vehicle won't be actually parked outside. They will approach, the door opens, they go in and the door closes. So that, all their activity would, would be within the same, the safety of the suspect transfer garage.
No concern having public parking right next to that Sally port?
No, not really. I mean, there's always a concern from a security standpoint of having unsecured vehicles parked near the edge of any public building. But within the, the overall constraints of what we're planning here, you know, that we, we're trying to make sure that any loss of parking is made up for so we don't have a zoning infraction for losing parking spaces. The other thing too about having the Sally port on this side is that there is a number of folks that will be brought in for some activity in custody and then they will not be transported away. They'll be released here, they currently are too. So this allows for all that to happen in a public space if we go ahead and secure the other lot. Because the public wouldn't have access to it anymore, which is where they presently would be released.
Okay, thank you. And then it sounded like the next phase of design will include the, the court's portion, is that correct?
If, if we're, if this direction we're going now is, is something that we can proceed with. And yes, what one of the, in order to enable it floor to floor, one of the elements would have to happen would be looking at recomposing the courtroom, both for exiting and for minimizing movement for the person being brought into court in custody.
Yeah, as you guys know, we've mentioned the separation of public and secure areas on the court level is, is our biggest concern. Understanding that moving the in-custodies and having a direct route is important, but we still have the public right outside of our chambers. So that, that's really our, our main focus from a security standpoint. Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Are we going to next steps? All right. Fernando, you just stop sharing.
Unshare, Fernando. Thank you.
We've got a lot of next steps, but we really wanted to get you guys up to speed today and that was our goal. We have a small project committee that we would like to add aboard a county commissioner representative on that committee. We are, as Elizabeth had asked about pricing, we are just starting to update the cost models from F C I, which is why Mike Potter's on the line. So if you have questions about dollars and what his crystal ball might look like right now, which nobody really knows. Certainly feel free to ask Mike, what are you seeing? But we're going to look at these, you know, get some of that pricing. So then we'll come back to you all and get a decision on how, you know, how, how it will proceed within the budget constraints that we have. I believe next week at your next Wednesday meeting, there will be an R F Q P for an architect of record for your review. So we'd like to release that like the day after your meeting, if possible. It usually takes four to six weeks to get an architect of record on board. So we're looking to get someone on board, maybe late May of 2025. And then we'll launch into the architectural engineering design at that point, which will include the ad alternates that were listed before. This, we think, will take from June to November, but we will have to see what kind of response we get on that R F Q P. So they will take Jim's concepts, his technical specifications, and Jim and his group will be along for all of that design. But we kind of pass the torch on to the architect. Then they get into what's called schematic design, then design development, and then construction documents, which are your permit documents. We would like to have our G M P, which is the guaranteed maximum price pricing, by the end of the calendar year, have permitting going on around that same time so that we could potentially start construction in quarter one of 2026. This is of course all subject to change, but that's our goal right now. And then the construction duration will be six to 12 months. And that really depends on what kind of scope we can afford to do. The more scope we do, it will take longer. And those are our immediate next steps all the way through the end of construction.
Where, where is the like further consultation and further design?
So that's that period between the architectural engineering design, between June and November, there will be lots of Yeah, and we'll have a lot more meetings with stakeholders, the court spokes, law enforcement, more intensive user group meetings. And with you all too on your function, you know, and if there are other things you would like to have priced while we're at it.
Is there a, has anyone built like a prioritization list of what we absolutely need versus, you know, things that will be, that could be cut? Because I think all of us can see that there's going to be cost increases across the board on every material we're going to be using on the horizon. So as that happens, if that happens, worst case scenario, do we have a list of things that we can start to cut out of this that won't majorly interfere with the mandated operations we need to bring up to standards?
Yeah, I mean, the previous B O C C was pretty clear that this project is focused on law enforcement and heat's operation. So that's why that's our priority goal with the budget that we have. And so once we get the numbers, we can start saying yes, no. And then we're going to start pricing out alternates. The B O C C's wishes for this room and other things is an alternate, just like the courts are, just like the D A is. So like, if we can make it happen within our budget, first and foremost for law enforcement, and we'll move forward with other things or not move forward. But at, at a minimum, you'll have the idea of what it's going to cost to do a full renovation of the entire courthouse. That's one of the pluses, yeah.
I think we'll look to you all to help us with that prioritization. We'll bring you a menu almost of, you know, pick up the menu, what is the priority? And, and F C I and Mike Potter, they're really great at breaking out that pricing by scope of work. So with a lot of detail, so we can look into that. Even if maybe there's ways to squeeze down some scope for value engineering or reduction in scope to, to get things that you need for lower cost, we'll be looking at all of those things and bringing them back to you for guidance.
Sorry, guys, if the room is stuck in this little room for a while.
Try to make it painless.
We just get a window and some new carpet.
Sludge hammer.
Sludge hammer. Look at the TV that looks like the outside.
Just need, we need air in here. Yeah.
I'm just going to throw out there. Well, let, let me jump on it. Yeah. So I mean, I, I guess, and I just say this, this is from our perspective. I don't say this is, this is what happens to me. I understand we all have budget issues, but I think this is the only courthouse in the state of Colorado that has staff sitting out of unsecured areas. And from court's perspective, court security, my staff's security, call alternate as far as what we're looking at, that can't be an alternate. I mean, we just can't have a courthouse with, with a lack of security. So I, from our perspective, that, that has to be part of this plan for us to continue using this as a, as a, a courtroom. We just, there's a lot of security problems and Elizabeth will talk with James about it. But my staff has to be secure, people accessing court has to be secure. And that just can't be, if we have enough money, that just has to be a courthouse to run through that.
Mike and Elizabeth, I sent you this slide deck with the floor plan so you don't have to take pictures of the screen. So please, Elizabeth and Mike and all of you, when you get those plans, you know, please give us feedback and we'll get that to the team. We know that that's really important as the security. That's something I've been hearing since the beginning of this project.
And independent of security, the law enforcement, and I'm not suggesting we don't need the upgrades for law enforcement, but that makes that courtroom non-functional. We can't have court in that courtroom without a jury box, without being able to put the jury someplace, without crossing paths with defendants, without all those different components. I don't, I don't know if you all know, we're going to have heat in the courtroom, real liberation room.
We know, we know.
Didn't we, didn't we get it sorted, Mike?
You have heat now?
There's a blower.
It's happened, yes.
Which is, which is what we'll talk about, like this is only in the phase around the specific architect who's available to design heat's needs. And as the project scope blends to what we want, then we can have conversations about what we can afford. When it becomes priority and it is heard, you all cannot have no heat up there, cannot have an unsecure court. We, we get that, we just got to figure out the full scope first before we can start choosing our options.
And what opportunities do we have to have to go back to underfunded courts for a larger grant that was like was awarded to the Justice Center?
So we can go back on an annual basis. This is the physical or whatever basis, but we can go back and get and ask for, for more money. Elizabeth can probably answer that question better, better than I can. But that one thing is sort of stressed that this is, we all know it, I'm not saying it to be dramatic. This is sort of the courthouse in the state of Colorado that is most problematic. Every other courthouse, it was our, our level has got new courthouses. Except Lake, can I understand that we worked hard, that's gone. It's this building. So I, you know, we are a focus of underfunded. There's a little apprehension for underfunded, we've gotten, we've got money, giving it back. And underfunded is totally time, time out. We support Lake County, so I can't say we can get X. I think the legislature just refunded it, but Elizabeth can probably answer that question better than I can.
Go ahead, Elizabeth, if you want to chime in on the underfunded topic.
Beth, I'm sorry, my internet's cutting out, so I just took off my camera. Hopefully you can hear me. One thing I wanted to comment on that I'm not seeing on the schedule, when will the court's concept be discussed? Is that something that's going to happen in April?
June through November is when the ad alternates are going to be worked through?
Yeah.
They won't be schematic designed until the architect's on board?
Right, Jim's doing concept and then the architect director will take off with schematic, correct?
So no concept for courts at this time then?
Correct. I think Jim has, Jim, you've gotten some feedback, yes?
Yes, I mean, we, we got some, the initial very, very quick input from, from court staff when we were there on site. And with the, as we move through this first stage through the sheriff's area, if there's approval for, for instance, where that proposed elevator would go, then we would be looking to actually do a court concept, much like what you see here for sheriff. We just didn't want to proceed doing that if there was objection to where, for instance, the elevator was going. So yeah, that would, there would be something, you know, just like what you saw with the sheriff going on with the court's area as well. I, is what we had contemplated.
That would be prior to the architect of record coming on board, so that would be That would be prior to the architect of record coming onboard, so that would be prior to June, then?
Well, it would be, yes. I, I, I guess first we need to see where the numbers come back from FCI. But assuming that they come back in, you know, a manner that allows for things to proceed, then the next phase for us would be going through and trying to do a plan to show how the courtroom would, would work systematically. Also, one of the elements you noticed is we moved that staircase, and that allows us to define a new security barrier that would, you know, result in that whole area now being able to be reconfigured to be a zone that no one would walk freely through anymore.
Would that staircase move occur no matter what?
It, for the concept that we're proposing now, it would move no matter what in order to, to basically allow for the subsequent options to take place, both in the sheriff and in the court.
Okay. I would suggest FCI carry an allowance, then, for the renovations to the courtroom that would be required for the elevator, if the elevator's in place. Typically, we're seeing prices of $700 to $1,000 a square foot to do that courtroom. So I don't know that the pricing would be accurate if you don't include costs to renovate the courtroom. The elevator can't be there if the courtroom's not renovated. So I don't know how that can be handled, but I just want to make sure that the pricing is actually accurate for the decisions to be made. Separately, regarding underfunded, underfunded has awarded Lake County quite a bit of funding year after year. And this past year, I think on one of the earlier slides, $500,000 was awarded, and that's for the court's security portion. So carrying it as an alternate might not allow the funds for underfunded to be utilized if it's not part of the base scope. I don't believe that it was presented that it would be an alternate when the underfunded committee awarded those funds. So I would be weary about how it's carried and make sure that that's an allowable use of those. And then the application for this year should be open in September, and those funds would be for the calendar year of '26.
Just to clarify, I believe our application did clarify what our scope was and our priorities were in the project. The funding, as I understand, year over year for underfunded courts is a total of $3 million for every courthouse across the state. Asking for those funds, yes, we've got $500,000. We're more than happy to apply again, and just saying we're not gonna get $7 million that we've priced out before to renovate the entire courts. So we're happy to do it.
What about the congressional projects submissions that are due on the 18th? Because underfunded courts is on there as the priority of what they wanna be funding.
We can certainly look at that.
It just seems like the more money we can get for this, the better.
Yeah.
So that whatever we're using for a COP or coming out of the general fund can be lessened or freed up.
Yeah, we're still trying to ensure that we can even continue the $3.5 million that we've had in the congressional directed spending, so we're still trying to figure that out, but we can talk about that.
Maybe we'll ask for it just in case we lose that other, and then we're washed.
Yeah.
Okay, we can connect on that later. But it seems like there are enough constituents in this room that we could make a pretty, pretty valid argument to Congress to get that.
Yep. I know that there might be some existing requests for infrastructure funding also with that dollar, so I just wanna make sure we're, what our ask is, is our ask instead of having our name on multiple things, but maybe that's fine.
It's just, it's a separate project.
Okay.
For courts. It's a USDA.
Oh, okay.
It's separate. Court-specific. It's separate from infrastructure, like water and sewer. So might as well apply for that now.
Yeah.
Okay. Cool, let's chat about that. Okay, this has been fabulous. In all the worst way.
Yeah, this is stressful. I mean, there's so much, so many boxes we need to check, and there's only so much ink left in the pen. It's like-
Love that metaphor.
We just- How are we gonna do all this?
We have this much money and this much need.
Yeah.
Yeah. We still don't get wind in this room.
And this, this room's not even, I mean, we're taking this like jam.
I'm doing it. Colleen, I hope it's on your list.
This, this, you know, having a functional sheriff's apartment and a courtroom comes above our personal comfort in this room.
For sure. And Michael, have you been able to be, I look forward to you being able to engage with the architect of record to really talk about the systems issues? Because even if we're moving around walls, that's not gonna solve the heat. So I'm, I'm really grateful that you're part of this project, so we can make sure that that's getting checked as well as these space needs. So thank you.
Just wanna do that.
Love it. Good. Oh, yeah. Yeah. We would like to be, it's Mondays. We usually are meeting every other Monday. I'm happy to. Matt, do you want to?
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I have a lot of experience drafting, construction, and all residential.
Yeah.
Can we talk about it?
Yeah.
Do you have a decide right now?
Yep.
Yeah. Would you be open to somebody on the court side being on the project? I don't believe you'd object.
It's, it's a big, it's, there's a lot involved in this.
I think it's important to have a B O C C member, because ultimately it's our, it's us managing the money of what we, what we're gonna choose and what we can afford. And obviously, the courts are an important part of that, but not the whole of what we're doing. So maybe as we get to understand what the committee's doing and their scope, we could see if there's room for courts. You okay with that, Jim?
Yeah, I mean, we've already conceded that we know we're at the bottom of the priorities list. So just to, to make sure that we stay unbiased as possible in, in the whole decision making.
I'm not gonna sit on that committee to be like, I'm getting that window. I'm saying to make sure that we're taking care of our money and our priorities as the scope unfolds.
I personally would have a problem with it. I mean, I think you guys have some really valid points, and, you know, I think we almost need one of you up there.
Just for, in grand scheme, I mean, recently there was a case that mistried because the access of the defendant into the courtroom caused the jury to even see that he was in custody. That's an issue. And so those little nuances, if you don't have somebody involved in this process from the courts, those are gonna be lost.
I just wanna see what he needs.
And what is realistically functional and constitutional and all those things. I don't know how you can do this without, without somebody.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying that the committee, the committee's talking about scope and money and who's managing which consultants. And it's not as though the courts won't be part of it, but it's every other Monday. That's a lot of time for somebody from the courts to be available to be participating on the committee. That's why I was offering that, like, let's just see what the committee is to make sure you all have your, have say in the project, but not so much that you have to be showing up for an hour every other Monday.
We'll go to every week, probably, too.
And then we'll go to every week, yeah.
It's more about, like, the project management administrative side. We're gonna have focus groups. You'll see in the RFP that is gonna be before you next week. The architect is having, like, it says in the RFP, you have to meet with the DA, you have to meet with B O C C staff, you have to meet with the courts so that we find out what you need, and then we design it based on that. We'll go over whatever they come up with one-on-one with you, just like we did with Sheriff Speckman. So it's more of, I'm, I'm just nervous, 'cause then I'm gonna have to ask the DA to join. Are we gonna have to ask all the independent offices that may be impacted? It starts to balloon, and then it's really hard to get the nitty gritty figured out from, like, a project manager.
Yeah, I think participation in the committee isn't exclusive of being able to, like, advise. You know, and we can come up with a schedule that works for you guys when you get to chime in on these steps so that we're not doing anything that's not gonna work for you guys.
And, and that's fine. I, you know, our, our concern is, we go through and we say, or we read the elevators going there, and now we're out of money for everything else, and we have not motion for it. So we just need to make sure there's, there's a dialogue going and, you know, our team is included. We just don't hear things at B O C C meetings, 'cause sometimes it's too late and it's hard to have a dialogue.
Yeah, yeah.
And the intent is to fully get these alternates designed so that, and, and then it's like where the rubber meets the road is the construction money, right? So we wanna make sure that those designs are functional for all of you as we're moving towards the construction. And then potentially, construction has to be phased, depending on funding, that type of stuff. But we don't wanna just show the courtroom as a vacuum. Like, that's good. It's all gonna be planned out, and it's just the, the construction is the expensive part, so.
Right.
We wanna make sure it's gonna be functional. And then whatever construction gets done, that it's not gonna impact you if we can't afford to do those things like you guys brought up just now with the elevator being an issue where it is.
Correct. Our concern is you guys approve, all right, we, we approved detention. We, we, we support HEAT getting the room he needs, and, but you approved detention, and now we're out of money for anything else, and, and that just can't happen. I take Elizabeth's point, is they, they sort of have to go together, 'cause the whole project has to work in the long run. There's, so you can call it all, you can call whichever, whatever you want, but it's gotta be part of the, sort of, the whole concept for this whole, for the concept to work.
That's why it's confusing for us to have only seen the heat spilled out. And, and based on this timeline, we will see the full before we even start talking about what can we afford, et cetera. So we're not gonna move on to the next phase if some of these necessary aspects of what HEAT needs are, are not fiscally possible. 'Cause then we have to go back prioritizing con- concept and design. You have to prioritize the top priority, which is, which is HEAT's area. And, and if we have to go back, 'cause we don't have enough money to do just that, then, then having gone all the way to the courts and designed everything else out, it's like a waste of money. So if we've designed an elevator that, that, we don't even have enough money for that, then there's no point to have designed out the full court, considering that elevator there, because we would have had to save money and come up with a different design with which would impact the entire, like, the, who was the lovely presenter from the, with the courts background?
Elizabeth?
With the law enforcement background?
Jim.
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 Oh, hi.
Yeah, Jim, thank you. So Jim would have to go back and reconfigure that, just like you said, we have a Tetris building. So I get that it's also a little confusing where it seems like that's the priority, but just in terms of design order of operations, that is the priority first. It's not actually the priority for the full scope of work.
Right.
But everything has to be built off of that. So there's no point going to the next phase if we can't afford what's been designed so far. So just, I just wanna say, like, I'm getting this tone that, like, it seems as though law enforcement is the only priority and that we would, we would cut courts to get law enforcement in, and that's not the case. It's just that it looks like that because of the order of operations of design.
Sure, we gotta start somewhere.
Yeah, and this is just where we happen to start with this project. Next phase is gonna include everything. Everyone's phase is gonna have a prioritization list of, like, what can we afford? What is absolutely necessary, and then everything else.
The full thing that will have that prioritizing.
No, I appreciate that, and, and for a long time, it did have that feel. I appreciate that, that statement, too. Ron, you guys are great partners. We wanna partner with you. It is stressful.
Thanks.
For sure.
I'm not stressed at all.
I'm stressed.
Let's make it not stressed. We're gonna get done what has to be done. We're gonna lose some things that we probably want. It's okay. You know, we're all, we're all big kids. We can handle this. We'll, we'll figure this out. It's gonna take a lot of number crunching, and we're gonna get there in the end. You know, I mean, it's just, it's gonna take some time and some conversation, communication, and collaboration.
Yeah, let's see where these cost models come in, and then-
Yeah.
It could be 20 million, and we're like, oh, great.
Son of a-
Yeah. And we won't let that happen.
Yep.
Yeah.
'Cause we have to make room for the courts, so we'll have to whittle it down.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Colleen.
Yeah, thank you all. Nice to meet you in person.
Yeah, likewise.
Good luck.
Thank you.
My end is empty.
All right. Is that it? Anyone else have anything to add, comments, questions? Just general?
I, I appreciate it as well. We've been in this process for a long time, and sometimes we keep starting over again. And so I'm not trying, you guys are great. You're new. We all have a common goal here.
Yeah, we can do this. We can do this. Figure it out. All right, well, on that note, it is 12:35. We're gonna conclude this work session of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners. Thanks, everyone, for hanging in there, sweltering in our small room with us.
Breathing each other's air. Thank you, Chair.